All right, thank you, Michelle. So, welcome. It's good to see you all here. Who would like to, is, are there any Boy Scouts in the audience? All right, how about the Boy Scout lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please, men. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under one individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so tonight is the February 27th meeting of the Middlesmith Field Township Board of Supervisors. And we have, we just have a few things to do before we get to the main show of the, of the night. So, we don't have Pat Armstrong, our Solicitor Pat Armstrong with us here tonight. And his stead is, I always wanted to say David Knightley because he was our Knightley in shining armor, but he corrected me. The correct way to say his name is David Keatley.
You got it.
So, welcome, thank you, and we'll turn it over to him in a moment after we just, is there, do I hear a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Motion.
Comments or questions? All in favor? Do I hear a motion for the approval of the minutes? Comments or questions? All in favor? And then can we have a report on executive session?
We, we have no actual report as a result of actually executive session, but.
All right, I'm going to hold off on the announcements because there's a lot tonight and all the announcements will be made during our presentations. So is there any public comment on any non-agenda items? And that includes the folks on Zoom? No? Okay, so, Michelle, any correspondence?
No.
Okay, so that brings us to the public hearings and we had to have those first. My layman's understanding of it was we had to have the public hearings first. If no one is here for the public hearing, that will go very quickly. If someone is here for the public hearing, we had to do that first anyway until we get to the main attraction tonight. So I'll turn it over to David.
Thank you Supervisor Atkinson. Time's 7:08. I'd like to call the hearing to order for 205 Walker Drive, Monroe County Tax Parcel The owner, Oscar Brown. It's an order to show cause why the building on the property should not be vacated and demolished under the Dangerous Building Code of Middlesmith Field Township. I'll note that we have all three supervisors present tonight. And I'll ask the audience at this point, is there anybody present in the room who has an interest in the property located at 205 Walker Drive at Middlesmith Field Township? I see no response from the audience. Anybody who's going to be presenting tonight, make sure you speak slowly. We do have a stenographer. Just make sure only one person speaks at a time so she can take everything down. Now, at this point, I'd like to introduce the boards exhibits into the record. We have Boards Exhibit One being the owner and parcel information from Monroe County Assessment Office. Boards Exhibit Two is an August 7, 2024 Notice of Unsafe Building sent to the owner. B3, Boards Exhibit Three is an Interoffice Memorandum dated October 4, 2024 authored by Sean McGlynn for the Middlesmith Field Township Board of Supervisors requesting permission to conduct an investigation and examination of the property. I would note that that was approved by the Board of Supervisors at a public meeting on October 10, 2024. Boards Exhibit Four is a two-page interoffice memorandum from Sean McGlynn to the Middlesmith Field Township Board of Supervisors dated January 17, 2025 detailing his findings and recommendations based on an inspection of the property. Boards Exhibit Five is a Notice of Dangerous Building in order to appear for hearing, directing the owner to appear tonight at this time for the hearing at this location. And it indicates that it was mailed regular and certified with a return receipt requested. And then finally, Boards Exhibit Six is the U.S. Postal Service tracking information for the notice and the order indicating that it was successfully delivered on February 13, 2025 to an individual at that address. So with that, I would note that we have Sean McGlynn here from the Code Enforcement and Zoning Office from the Township. I would ask him at this time to be sworn and present testimony to the board based on his findings.
Is there a written testimony or is it supposed to be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, Ms. McGlynn, let me proceed. Thank you.
Is it easier if I come up here? Are you guys good where?
Wherever you're most comfortable.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. My name's Sean McGlynn. I'm the zoning officer and building code official for Middlesmith Field Township. I'm going to be presenting some information to the board tonight regarding these two structures that are unsafe, dilapidated structures that are fit into our ordinance, which are ultimately considered nuisance properties. That's under chapter, chapter 89. And our recommendation at the end of the hearing is going to be to recommend that the buildings be demolished and removed. So right now we're dealing with, with Walker. But before we get into that, I think it's important, based on the hearing that we're, that we're dealing with right now for, for me to give a little bit of my background just so we can get that into the record. And I brought along several copies of my resume and I'll, I'll hit some of the high points. So you guys.
If you're okay with this, I'll mark this as an exhibit. SFM one? Yes.
Okay. So just for those folks who aren't familiar with my background, I have an environmental science degree from Stockton University, but I've been focusing mainly for my career in construction. So I have owned a construction company in the, in the eighties and nineties, and I moved into doing building code. And as you can see from my resume, I'm certified in 14 categories in, under the Uniform Construction Code. I'm a Pennsylvania Building Code Official. I've also taught for the Northampton County Community College for 10 years. I'm also a professor or a teacher for the Pennsylvania Construction Code Academy currently. And I now own SFM Consulting, which is a third-party municipal provider. Prior to that, I worked for another third-party municipal provider, meaning we did building codes, zoning, all kinds of enforcement in Bucks County and Montgomery County. Now I'm up here in Monroe, Northampton, Pike, Wayne Counties. So we cover a lot of territory. I've also done presentations through, for PSATs as well as for PASO. So, and I've created PowerPoint slides and written articles on building codes. So I have been accepted as an expert witness in, in Bucks County, Montgomery County, Northampton County, Monroe County, Pike and Wayne as an expert. So I've, I've been testifying as an expert witness in a number of communities on, on a lot of issues. And that includes zoning hearing boards and UCC appeals boards. So with that, I would like to submit that I am an expert in this field. And I think you can, hopefully you can take my recommendation as to where we're at with, with this building for one, and then we'll move to the next hearing.
Well, except you have an expert in field of zoning and building boards. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and my understanding is that the memo from January 17th is already in the record? The two-page memo in this, and we're talking about Walker?
It is.
Okay. So with that in the, in the record, and I, so the board has obviously had the opportunity to review what my inspection of the property revealed. But I've also taken some recent photos because since that time, the property has continued to deteriorate. And I want to get that information into the record.
And Mr. McGlynn, do you mind if I mark this packet collectively SFM two? Yes, that would be good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
SFM two is received in the record.
Okay, so in front of you, you have a packet of photographs. Those were taken by, by me today, or no, actually, these were taken yesterday for, for 205 Walker. As you can see, there has been significant structural failure. Several of the outside walls have collapsed. Part of the roof has collapsed as well. The building is clearly not secure from entry as well as it has no utilities. It is not habitable and it functions as an attractive nuisance and a hazard to the community. Kids could get into this building. It's a fire could, you know, could be started. Any number of problems that can exist with a building or a structure in this state as well as it also affects, obviously, quality of life and neighboring property owners and depreciates their property value. So I don't think we need to belabor the point. I think it's pretty obvious from the images that are in front of you that this building would need to be demolished. There is no intrinsic value left in this structure. Even the foundation itself, which is, is what's considered a CMU or a concrete mason or unit wall. Once a building has had this level of structural failure or water infiltration, that water has been getting into the concrete block over the winter and freezing, and that expands. And so even the foundation, in all likelihood, is, is not worth saving. So in, in my opinion, the most effective thing to do would be to demolish and remove this structure from the property.
Thank you. Mr. McGlynn, do you have anything else to add? Your testimony?
No, I think we have everything in.
Thank you. I'll ask again if there's anybody in the audience who has an interest in the property of 205 Walker, Walker Drive. Is there anybody here who has an interest in 205 Walker Drive? I see no response. Therefore, I'll turn it over to the Board of Supervisors. If any of you have questions for Mr. McGlynn, I can ask them. I believe there are no. I believe there are no questions.
No, I, I think that was a thorough report. The pictures kind of say it all.
Thank you. Yes, I, I agree. It's, it's, it's time to take that building down.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. We appreciate it to meet. Since no one has appeared on behalf of the property and nobody has an interest, turn it over to the Board of Supervisors at this point for any comments or deliberations or thoughts, and then eventually turn it over or put it to a vote. Is there any deliberations or comments that the board would like to make at this time?
No. I have none.
No. Thank you. Now we'll entertain a vote. We need to vote on whether to approve Mr. McGlynn's recommendation or to reject it. And if we vote to reject, we have a different vote put up. But at this time, I'll ask individually Supervisor Oney, how do you vote?
Hi.
Supervisor Atkinson, how do you vote?
I agree with Sean McGlynn.
And Supervisor Dwyer, how do you vote?
Thank you.
This is 3-0, and also Mr. McGlynn's recommendation to demolish. That will be the order of the board. We will issue written findings of fact and a written decision and an order to demolish subsequently after this hearing. At this time, I close the hearing for 205 Walker at 7:19 PM. Thank you.
If I, if I may, could you just explain to the ordinance what the next steps are and where, where, where we are as far as approving it?
Yes, so we'll, the board will have to draft written findings of fact and a written decision, put everything we just did in writing. And the order orders the, under our ordinance, it orders the property owner to begin work cleaning up the property within 10 days and must finish the work within 30 days. At that point, if they do not comply with the order, we have the option to enforce it by going to court.
And then after court?
So if court, we would be asking for injunctive relief. That's where we ask a judge to allow us to enter the property, perform the demolition work ourselves, generate the bill, and then bill the owner or place a lien on the property for that.
Thank you.
All right.
That we will be, now that we have the order from the board, we will be posting this notice that the demolition on the building is.
Yes, thank you. Yes, it does need a placard for demolition. All right. Are you ready to proceed to the second hearing?
Yes.
This time it's 7:20. I'll call the hearing against 6719 Elm Road in Middlesmith Field Township. It's Monroe County Tax Parcel ID 09.14A.1-9.16. The owners, Joseline and Edgar Triunfo of Union, New Jersey. The I'll note that we have all three board members present for this hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who has appeared, who has an interest in 6719 Elm Road of the Middlesmith Field Township? Is there anybody in the audience who has an interest in that property? I see no response. At this point, I will go over the exhibits, which we have compiled on behalf of the board. Exhibit, exhibit one is owner and parcel information for the property drawn from the Monroe County Assessment Office. Boards Exhibit Two is an August 14, 2024 Notice of Unsafe Building sent to the owners indicating that they had an unsafe building. B3, that's an interoffice memo from Mr. Sean McGlynn to the Board of Supervisors dated October 4, 2024, requesting permission and authorization to conduct a formal investigation and examination of the building. That was approved at the subsequent Township Supervisor's meeting on October 10. Boards Exhibit Four is an interoffice memorandum dated January 17, 2025 from Sean McGlynn to the board detailing his findings and recommendations from an inspection conducted on November 11, 2024. Boards Exhibit Five is the Notice of Dangerous Building in order to appear for hearing tonight at 7:00 PM at this building on this date. And Boards Exhibit Six is tracking information for the property. Now, this time, I will turn it over to Sean McGlynn. Do you have a presentation for the board on 6719 Elm Road, Mr. McGlynn?
Yes, I, I don't think I need to introduce myself again.
We'll make another copy of your CV. We'll incorporate your testimony from the previous hearing regarding your qualifications. And I'll move into the record of this hearing as well. Exhibit SFM one, copy of your CV.
Okay, good. So similarly, we've, we followed the same procedure for, for the property of Walker. This, this building on Elm is maybe not as in adequate shape. There, it has not, walls have not collapsed yet. However, the building is not secured from entry and it is dilapidated. And it is in such a condition that in, in all likelihood, the cost to repair would far exceed the cost to rebuild a building. We've been reaching out to these property owners. There's been no response. And this again is a nuisance. It is a hazard to the neighborhood. So let me give you these photos that I took today.
I'll mark this packet collectively as SFM two.
Thank you.
So again, you have a packet of photos in front of you for 6719 Elm. As you can see from the first photograph, there are no windows or doors. There, there is significant rot on the siding as well as within the structural elements of the floor assembly. There, so this is a, a structure that is dilapidated. And it is, is deteriorating quickly. As a matter of fact, if we get another heavy snowstorm, we could start to see some failure. I've noticed that some of the exterior walls are starting to bulge. So in all likelihood, this building, you know, is, is going to, it could potentially collapse in the near future. So if you turn to the fourth page, you can see how the rot has worked its way right through the wall assembly. Silk, the silk plate is shot. The vanjoist has failed as well. The ceilings are collapsing inside the building. And there is no, no integrity left to the structure. Again, similar to the last building, we looked at the, there, there is practically zero intrinsic value in the structure. Practically every aspect of it would need to be replaced as well as the foundation, which again is a concrete mason or unit wall. Water gets into that, freezes, and it starts to break the wall apart. So in all likelihood, this structure would not, it would be more expensive to repair it than it would be to replace it. And because of the attractive nuisance component, the risk to the community, the degradation to the neighboring property values, it's my recommendation that this building be ordered demolished as well.
Thank you, sir. I'll ask again if there's anybody in the audience who has an interest in 6719 Elm Road who has questions for Mr. McGlynn. See no response. At this point, I'll turn it over to the board, see if they have any questions for Sean McGlynn.
No.
I have two questions. One is, are we, are we insured that this is 6719 Elm and not fig?
That was my concern today. It was, it was a fur, it was a fur address. So Judy double-checked with the county. And I, I think if someone does come in to rebuild on this lot, we will let the county know they're going to have to reassign the address because you're right, right, the driveway comes off, what, what driveway is left there comes off with fur. The house is oriented towards fur. Yeah, so we double-checked to make sure that we were identifying the correct parcel as well as the, the owners of that property. Yes. The minor lakes can get very confusing because of the number of parcels in the, in the area.
And then my, my second question is, on Elm, it appears that there's a new shed on this property.
That's, that's the other thing that I found today that we're going to be checking in the zoning offices, whether a permit went out. And the property where the folks that have that A-frame that's up here, so that's where it is. So we're going to investigate that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
I have no questions.
Okay. At this point, if the board has any comments or deliberations you'd like to make, now will be the time?
I have none.
No. Okay, we'll put it to a vote. Now, the vote is to either approve or reject Mr. McGlynn's recommendation. If we vote to reject, a need, a separate vote to be put up. At this point, Supervisor Oney, what is your vote? Supervisor Atkinson, what is your vote?
I vote to demolish.
And Supervisor Dwyer, what is your vote?
I.
Thank you. 3-0. In addition to the vote, we're good to the recommendation of Sean McGlynn. We will issue findings of fact and a written decision subsequently to tonight. Thank you. That closes this matter at 7:20.
Okay, well, that was a great way to get silence in the news. I wish we had Liz here to do the breathing exercises and get us all pumping again. So, thank you. All right, so that brings us to the, thank you, Sean. Thank you. So that brings us to the main attraction of the show, which is the 2024 Person of the Year and finalist. So we would like to congratulate you. Just wanted to take a moment. So Liz is not able to be here with us tonight, but we have somebody represent, Cheryl Rice. I believe you are here on behalf of Liz Gonzalez. So every year we, we do this and we have, we have some programs out if anybody would like to grab any. So we're congratulating Betty Ann Ricky as 2024 Person of the Year. Well, Susan, and we're congratulating Maria Aquendo. And of course, Liz Gonzalez. So I just wanted to say how wonderful it is to have a collection of beings come together for the common good. And every year we do, we have an event that the staff works very hard to put together to recognize these individuals over at the Community and Cultural Center. And then we have the actual check presentation because you can't cash those big cardboard checks. And a plaque presentation. Every year it turns into some kind of a cluster. So, um, so, because no matter which way we face, you're always facing the camera the wrong way and getting the back end of everybody. So, so we're glad that we have Channel 13 here. I'm sure they'd like to have a few words with you afterwards. This is a great opportunity to ask the finalist and the Person of the Year to come on up and you can say a few words to the audience about your organization. So, so who would like to start? Would the Person of the Year like to start or Francis, would you like to start?
First of all, I want to thank Middlesmith Field Township for creating this great award of volunteerism. A lot of people volunteer and give up their time and they never get the recognition that they should. I am grateful to my Bushkill Smithfield Lions Club for recognizing me as all for all that I do and nominating me for the Person of the Year Award. Not only for my Lions Club, but for all the organizations I am involved in. My commitment to the 1,000 Pink Light Walk, there we are, is to help raise money for breast cancer patients who go to the Dale Francis Hughes Cancer Center and are in Monroe and Pike County only. It's for our community. And it's for each one of, you know, your friends and we're helping them. It's not going anywhere, but it's staying in our community. I'm still not sure how this all happened because I'm just me. I am honored to be Middlesmith Field Township 2020 Person of the Year.
I'm joining Betty on the other side. And the treasurer will give you your chat.
Oh, the real one.
We'll join her over on the other side and I'll grab my camera and we'll take some, some photos and then.
Oh, Rick, we have a, excuse me.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. Let's join over on the other side before we call over each one. And as Mark, please. Oh, sure. Also, we have.
Yeah, congratulations.
So there's other officials in the room who would also have a few words to say. There's, I see people here from the Lions Club. I see people here from the Columbia Jets. I see people here from the Christian Women's United Club. I see everything that Betty. So, and I'm also seeing elected officials. I see accounting commissioners here. I see Supervisor Chairperson Rob Roner from, because you're a resident of Maven Township. And Oh, Aaron, here you are. You're sitting right next to Teresa Chris. Supervisor Aaron. Aaron Springs. Sam, how are you? We have the advantage already. So why don't we do this? All the elected officials stand up and Judge Paul Mendito.
Now, anyone like to say a word?
Yes.
Betty Ann Reaching for selfless contributions with hard work for Middlesmith Field and the community of 1,000 Pink Light Walk in support of breast cancer patients with transportation to and from treatment, rent, utilities, food, and childcare. Congratulations for winning the 2024 Person of the Year Award for Middlesmith Field Township. You're the gatekeeper. Thank you. You're the gatekeeper. Thank you.
Uh, are there any other folks who'd like to come up and say a few words on behalf of Betty Ann?
Oh, my God, you're all quiet.
Well, uh, you're very welcome.
Supervisor and also for the staff for doing this.
Don't go far because we're gonna call you back up with, with, because we'll have one group shot with all the people and all the, uh, officials. So there's a box for her plaque. Okay, so Francis, would you like to? So, are we the incredible? So, he's gonna.
I need to see on the van away of, of my wife's. What can I say about the incredible bowlers? We like to participate with, uh, all the adults with disabilities in our community. We bowl at Skylands. We appreciate Skyland because they give us the opportunity to have the lanes we needed to bowl. They're all happy when they bowl. They want to come back when they bowl. So bowling is what we do. As you can see, uh, we made it a team effort by having T-shirt and their names on them. And anybody could bowl. Invite anybody who wants to meet these wonderful people to come and see them bowl. And you could bowl too. No problem at all. We'll, we'll, we'll direct you to the bowling center there and they'll shoe you up and you can bowl and play you down.
You're in the basket, right?
Yeah. As my wife and another person, uh, Beth, uh, made this possible, I just, I was in the coattails of the, but, uh,
We did it for our son who has autism. And when he graduated from high school, there wasn't a lot of activities for him. So we started just my husband and I, and then we started inviting other kids that graduated with him. And we've grown into a little family and the parents, they really enjoy it because they feel like they're with parents and they know how it is to have a childhood, uh, challenges. So that's, that's how we grew.
And it's not only the adults. We also have, uh, smaller kids from seven years old up that came and, uh, who have autism and they, their, their mothers and their parents come and tell us that how wonderful this is. And they, they want to come and bowl. And, uh, we have one small child that, uh, at the beginning he wasn't taught. And now he's saying thumbs up, way to go and all kinds of stuff. So it's. We have wonderful bowlers. Believe it or not, this is a trophy. We, we bowled against scouts from troop eighty-seven, eighty-three, troop one hundred, troop nine oh two. And whoever wins the match gets the bowling, the red bowling pin. So we still have it. So you know how good bowlers are.
On behalf of us, uh, thank you so much for all you do. And I love the quote that, uh, you selected for, um, the program to represent autism. I am, I am different, but I'm not less. And Mark's got up your plaque for you. So, uh, and I collected to read the three words on you. The nominee selected three words to describe, uh, Maria, and they are driven, heartfelt and inclusive. So if any elected officials would like to come up and say a few words, don't go far because you're gonna do it again.
Hi, hello. Hi, Commissioner Christ gave me the honor, uh, being the past educator that I have been for quite a few years. Uh, over time, um, knowing and understanding what an impact you are making on the children and their families and the other children around them. It, it just, it's not just the child. It's everyone around that person. So from Monroe County, a certificate of special recognition to Maria Quendo for her selfless contribution to Middle Smith Field and the community with the Bowling Organization for Adults with Disabilities called the Incredible, the incredible, the incredible.
Yeah, incredible bowlers.
Congratulations for being a finalist for the 2024 Middle Smith Field Person of the Year. And I, I think you, you guys are a team. I did tell. So congratulations to you and your other partners, partner in the team. Thank you. You're welcome.
That's right. Because Francis was also a Person of the Year finalist. I think it was twenty sixteen, was it?
So we have bookends.
Thanks for giving back to your community.
Now, uh, if you wouldn't mind coming up and accepting on behalf of Liz Gonzalez, you're gonna need us in chair yoga now, right? All right. Thought that would get your blood pumping.
Uh, hi. So I'm Cheryl Bryce. I'm the director of the Eastern Round Public Library. Uh, almost two years ago now, Liz Gonzalez approached us about doing a chair yoga program at the library. Uh, we started out once a week and it got so popular that we ended up doing, starting to do it two times a week. So Mondays and Fridays at two o'clock at the library. Uh, she does chair yoga, more chair yoga on Mondays and then Fridays she does, uh, chair cardio. Um, all ages, capabilities. Um, you know, she has people stand or you have to stay on the chair. Um, she works with everybody. Um, it's all volunteer based. And then, so she does it twice a week at the Hughes Library. And then she also started doing it as a cultural center in Middle Smith Field. Um, but we're very appreciative of everything she does. She does a lot for other nonprofits. The reason she couldn't be here tonight is I think she got like a cancer walk, uh, somewhere. So she asked me to accept this on her, uh, on her behalf. Um, but we're very grateful for all she does. The program blew up like crazy. I think she didn't even expect it to get as popular as it did because sometimes she has forty plus people in her yoga classes, which if you've ever been to yoga, that's actually a lot. So she's like, I'm gonna be at the cabinet. So sometimes she has forty plus people. Um, but yeah, we're grateful for Liz and also for the township for honoring her as, you know, a nominee for Person of the Year and, um, generous donation.
There you go, speaking of which.
If you wouldn't mind reading the three words on your plaque.
The three words are selfless, caring and inspirational. And if you can present this to Liz, we'd appreciate it for her selfless contribution to Middle Smith Field and the community with her chair yoga and chair cardio classes for the community. Congratulations on being finalist for the 2024 Middle Smith Field Person of the Year.
Uh, now with the, it's a three, uh, the Person of the Year and then three finalists. Don't go far, Cheryl will come on. It, it's always nice to get a group photo of all the elected officials, Sam, all you guys, uh, township supervisor.
Is he a county or a township representative or is he like?
Is, excuse me?
Your solicitor. Are we thinking of him as a poll ranger?
I don't know how much that costs.
No worries. Okay. So, yeah, anyone who would like to get into the nice group, I think there's Rick Proznic. Uh, actually nominated Betty and he's very generous with his time and we're grateful for town history also.
I've got Sweden, Sweden.
Okay. There you go. Don't forget to use the skinny shoulder.
You didn't have to say that for me.
I never stand on the end.
Really think of your call.
You don't remember to that. So, uh, I saw this, um, music program, uh, you know, so for anybody who doesn't know why we do Person of the Year and we have this, it's because these people don't talk about themselves and people are so anxious to talk about many of them. We thought we would show off who's doing something positive. So the township supervisors decided to put this award together to shine a spotlight on, uh, organizations that are out there doing good things and people that are mostly in a mine life because, um, they, they, they don't take the credit for themselves. You know, they, they do things for others and that's what the focus is. But at the same time, Betty wants to sell more t-shirt. So she needs the attention. So for the next year, the township is dedicated, like these will be our three causes. So now you can follow our Facebook. I mean, Betty, you got two paintings tips I can't come up that, uh,
April, yeah, April, that's his month.
Yeah. And I'm sure, uh, Liz does chair yoga over at the, um, Community and Cultural Center and also does fundraising for the library and also Maria, uh, I'm sure could use some funds for the incredible list too. So we will be publishing, uh, things for them. So that kind of, uh, led me to, to this. If you don't pay attention to the small things, you miss the big things. So, uh, you may think that you're a small thing, but you're not because the things that you are doing lead to big things. I mean, leads to big things in other people's lives. So I saw this and I wanted to get this, uh, for each of you. Um, so a fellow who happened to like whiskey, uh, noticed that when he was done and the whiskey had evaporated, it left something beautiful behind. So he, uh, started taking photographs of it. Um, and making beautiful artwork of it. So what goes unnoticed is often important and beautiful. So, uh, that just led me to all of you. And because I cannot keep you whiskey out of class. I thought I would keep you reading. So the words that we missed on Betty were loving, dedicated and leadership.
And when we come to this with our boxes on, there's money. Remember where it's going to go. Oh, my catty pants.
Gotta talk to the staff right now with the challenge doing the incredible.
That's embarrassing. That would be so embarrassing. Name the place and time, Mr. McGlynn. Finger books.
It's gonna be hard.
Thank you all.
Would you mind giving a thank you? So, well, let's see. So, uh, we're going to take just a few moments in recess, like maybe a two or three minute recess. The staff has prepared, um, like they do every year, their, uh, preview of the upcoming year of all the things that they've put together for you. And we're incredibly proud of our staff that does it. Um, because while elected officials might get the spotlight on things, we really know it's the staff that makes us look good. So, so, uh, and this is your opportunity to ask the staff any questions. However, um, if you have other obligations or would like to use the restroom after these stunning, uh, public hearings that we had, we'll just take a few minutes. How's that sound? All right.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it.
And David, where do you stand on it?
Perfect. I'll just stand and make that.
And thank you to the elected officials who offer their continued support in this mission. And it wouldn't be a night unless we thank the sponsors who make this possible because local businesses give donations and that allows us to do the events that we do. So, thank you, Grimbean and Thatcher, who's here tonight, Shealy Insurance, and then Prosha Labs and Raven Entertainment, and our slate sponsors Huffman's Electric and VIP Studios. And there are the three names. Okay, so every year we do this. We start with our priorities and we're glad that we completed one of them, and this is what tonight looks like. Oh, I'm so sorry, I didn't know that there was animation. And our mission statement, we need to expand our vision because we, the vision came in reality a while ago. Here are all the events. We always put these in here just so you have them in a handy place online. And we're going to start with operations. For communication, we do the best we can to reach all our residents. This is just a reminder of the things we have, and what's new for this year is TextMyGov. So Christopher handles that. And whereas before we had Textcaster, we were able to text messages out like that we were doing this presentation tonight. What's different with TextMyGov, it's an upgrade. So now, you know, everybody wants to know that their government is listening. So instead of us just being able to send out broad texts to everybody, you can text us back and you can ask questions anytime, day or night, and get your answers. So that's what's new for this year. So Myra, who handles move in and move out and all of that, she does the new resident packets. That's another way that we communicate to new residents that come in here. We send them something that has all the information they need to know as a new resident. So Michelle, would you like to speak on receptions behalf?
Sure. Kylie Madrono couldn't be here tonight. She is the Director of First Impressions. And she has compiled her accomplishments for the 2024 and 2045 building visitor draw. A lot of everybody that's been to the township, and they've seen 2,148 visitors last year. She is also the Assistant, you know, other departments and was an interim Sewer Department Manager in 2024.
There we go, sorry, Michelle.
Building visitors. Zoning is the most popular department in the township. People want to know what they're allowed to do, you know, on their property, so are many of them at the sewer departments, supervisors, and then other. And the month for each department, of course, summertime for zoning, actually it's any month for zoning. The busiest month is July, 265 people left here, and the busiest day of the week is, of course, Mondays. At 33 Yard Sale Permits were issued, Kylie does that also out front. So you see the Yard Sale Permit signs and stickers, and she handles all of that on behalf of the zoning department. And as you see, there are numerous articles regarding Middle Smithfield with ordinances, events, public notices.
That's you, Misses.
Okay, now this is mine, and it's for job opportunities.
Oops, sorry.
That's okay. Training employees, we continue to do employee training. Pocono Leadership 2025, Joan Woyzen, the Sewer Department Manager, was the last of the employees and admin to go to the leadership, which is out at Northampton. And land use webinars, group 10 safe cooperative is done by the staff as well as one member of our planning commission, Mr. Carter Gutterby, is always in attendance at these webinars. The P A U.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, that's okay. That's all right.
Just kicked me.
P A U School Planning Education Institute is also for the zoning department. Vicki Smith, Myra Malone. The My Work Program, we started in 2023, and we expect to have students again this year, probably four weeks instead of six weeks, and they shadow admin and public work, public works. We have an intern program that continues since 2012. They do help out and pretty measurable help with a lot of the events that go on through the township.
Yeah, at one point, we had interns from ESU, Northampton, and MCTI. So it was interesting, but we hope to have somebody from ESU this year.
The overview of all of the different organizations that the township staff takes seminars and webinars.
Budget and finance, and we don't have our budget and finance manager here, but we do have our treasurer here. Who would like to?
Yeah, so just to recap, 2024, as far as real estate income, we were, and tax income, I should say, property taxes were about 10% below what we had projected for 2024, but that was offset by a significant increase in the real estate transfers and earned income, which actually offset quite substantially. Zoning fees, as you can imagine, are on the way up because it is a significant or robust economy right now that we're going through, you know, a lot of zone issued permits. As far as the fire and EMS, LST, we instituted that last year. 2024, between the fire and EMS organizations, we dispersed $893,000 from the tax. We also dispersed another $70,000 from the LST, which is the $25 first check that they take out. So that was disbursed as well. In 2025, looking ahead, we have applied for a number of grants, whether it be for the community center, for building up in Wooddale. We did recently, Christopher got a grant for Art Parks. And a lot of the grants that we applied for in 2023, 2024 will get due in 2025, some of which were pretty successful, and we hope to get them from the various organizations.
We go right from money to sewer. So just as in the past 11 years, there's no sewer fee increase for 2025. And we've got a pretty good, healthy fund balance, although we will have some very big expenses coming up. So CCP, sewer line relocation. So because the bridge was so corroded, it has to be shut down, and utilities need to be relocated. So the township is working with PA American Water and Utilities. We were awarded a $20,000 grant, and we need to keep an eye on that, you know, to help mitigate moving it, which will cost in the six figures to move this. But we have to do that this year because the grant expires. We have to use the money by next year. The main thing that the Sewer Department is working on now is odor control. Nobody realizes how expensive odor control is for the sewer department. We had been using Equova. It's a very expensive chemical and needs to be constantly reapplied. We did a trial about a year or so ago, and the solution would have been about a half million dollars for this new system and new chemical that they were trying, testing. The idea is to put it in multiple different points to have it activate everything. And then our Sewer Department Manager, Joan Woyzen, saw an article in one of the sewer publications that she gets about a different system that manages to control odor. So she made the call and worked it out with our engineer. And that may come in a little bit more cost effectively, but as you can see, it's still pretty expensive. So that's the other option that we're looking at, and we are very anxious to move forward with that project. So the other thing is development follows infrastructure, and infrastructure means roads, sewer, and water. So we did receive a grant for $111,000. It was one of the LSA grants that we had applied for to bring our sewer system to Route 402, from where it is down Gravel Ridge Road to Route 402, to our C2 business district. So now that makes it more attractive, along with what you'll hear from James, you know, the LERTA that we have, a tax abatement program for that section, although they call it tax assessment assistance. But we've also applied for a second grant that would then take it from that corner down Gravel Ridge Road to the old Deerfield Inn. So that's what's going on in the Sewer Department. And here you can get a quick snapshot of where we stand with EDUs. We did earmark some money for other things too, like beautification in the pump stations along 209, but you'll see what the main things are here. So as you could see, we have 940 EDUs, which is terrific because, again, development follows infrastructure, which is roads, sewer, and availability of public water. We go right from the sewer to the Community Cultural Center. So we're happy to see it thriving, and we always leave these slides in here to remind people that it is a public space and all of the partners that are using it. And the idea was to build a good space for good people to do good work for the common good. And if you're looking to exhibit, or if you have a nonprofit that needs a place to meet or have an event, please call Holly. She could not be here tonight. So that's why I'm just running through her thing. So it's not even March, and we already have 54 events booked for the year, of which four are recurring events, and we get more and more. Danny Younger, oh, there he is, the Archaeology Club. You meet the second Thursdays, right, of the night, of the month. So these are just some of the organizations and some of the things that happen there. And you can look at that at your leisure. I have these cards out. The next thing that's up, the next big event is an art exhibit opening. So for Women's History Month, right now we have an exhibit out for Black History Month, and we encourage you to go see it. It's the traveling posters from the Smithsonian exhibit on the Poor People's March. So that will be coming down to make way for Women's History Month, so we encourage you to hurry, go see it. So there'll be an opening on Thursday, March 6, from 5 to, sorry, my glasses, from 5 to 7. And this Tricia Lowry-Lipritt always does a terrific job curing, she gathers many women artists together, and they put together their show, their exhibit, and it's multimedia. So it's painting, it's video, and the library is always doing a book pairing with it. So, and these are some of the other exhibits open. So some of the events that we were speaking about is on this page, and we encourage our Person of the Year finalist to make use of the facility. And that's about it for the Community Cultural Center. And every time we worked on this presentation and the staff worked on it, our budget and finance manager kept saying, "You're gonna take golf out of there." I'm tired of seeing golf in there because, as you've probably heard by now, the golf course is sold. And this is just a preview of it. So we welcome the Poconos Club. They're hard at work over there. The zoning department can tell you all about it if you're a little nosy. They've been applying for their permits and all, and they're redoing the banquet hall. This is good for the financial health of the township because it puts over 400 acres back on the tax rolls. And you'll hear more from James during his economic development report, how LERTA was part of the package that helped unburden us from what has been. And privatizing the golf course shifts the cost to supporting the golf course and banquet hall from the taxpayer to a private owner, which is good for us. And now we are up to exciting zoning, the busiest department.
Okay. I am Vicki Smith. I am the zoning administrator, I do building and zoning permits as well as supply and driveways and coding. This is our, here's a list of our offices we have passed and are up and coming, we're working on.
I'm sorry, I don't know how that got.
We have had seven properties that had property maintenance enforcement notices, and we're working with the owners to get these properties cleaned up. Our overall goal is to continue to enforce the codes while focusing on the health, safety, and welfare as well as beautifying the neighborhood. Our main goal is health, safety, and welfare. Sorry, I just something over my.
That's okay.
As you can see, our view ahead, our goal, our overall goal is to beautify the Middle Smithfield Township. And our goal in zoning is to work towards the residential areas. And we have at our disposal the property maintenance ordinance that was passed, the noise ordinance that is or will be passed, and the burning ordinance, just to name a few. So stay tuned for good things. As you can see, this is just a number of permits issued throughout the year, and as you can see, it is increasing. This is from January 1st to February 27th, and it has been steadily improving and going up. 2023, we had 495 total permits issued, and that's just building permits. And in 2024, we had 704 permits issued. And our will is to try for a thousand, right, Mark? And so we're trying for this year, for 2025, so get your permits in.
You never know.
And incoming news, something exciting, our citizens portal, and we've gone live, sort of. We haven't really pulled the trigger just yet. As you can see, what this is, what the portal is, it allows the residents to submit concerns, ask questions, and get real-time information for all your needs. There's the URL and a QR code. And it will be coming soon. This is what it's gonna look like if you're on your computer and if you're on your phone.
Well, thank you, Vicki. You need to sit down after those 704 permits in 2024.
Good evening. My name is Myra Malone. I'm also the zoning administrator. I do short-term rental inspections as well as the living and value resale certification inspections. My goals for 2025 are, well, our short-term rental ordinance goals was that the township has made two modifications to control noise. The first one is the new noise monitor. This will address noise levels that exceed the permissible levels. This was amended on November 7th, and the short-term rental ordinance is to require short-term rental owners with two verified noise violations to install a noise monitor. The purpose of the monitor is to notify the short-term rental property owners when the rentals are too loud, and this will allow the short-term rental owner to correct the issue in real time. The noise nuisance is scheduled to be held on March 13th. This new ordinance is to make it easier for the zoning office to enforce penalties for violations of noise under Chapter 136. Deckard Technology, I'm very proud to introduce this new short-term rental software. Our mission is to maximize compliance with what we are seeing in properties being little and switching platforms, which makes it a constant challenge. With Deckard, it will focus spaces challenges, and down below you'll see the benefits that it will give to the township. Increased compliance levels as the owners are made 100% aware of licenses so that they are tied to the regulations. This is just the overview of what the map will look like. Although short-term rental comprises less than 3.5% of the residences in Middle Smithfield Township, short-term rentals, if managed well, can bring several benefits to the community. This is based on the number of households that report from the Census Bureau, which means about four short-term rentals per 100 households. So although it may seem a lot, it's not a lot. And the benefits that this will bring to the township is economic boost, revitalization of neighborhoods, as well as increased tax benefits for the public services. Short-term rental ordinance was adopted in 2017, previously read unregulated. Since the adoption of the short-term rental ordinance, the zoning office has seen a marked decrease in short-term rental compliance. Down below, you'll see that permit issued from 2022 to the date, January to February. And these numbers reference to the licenses that have been compliant and issued for the year. Integrated goals are in progress, enhance coordination with realtors, improve short-term rental compliance rate, as well as conduct regular audits for current rental instances. This is an overall graph from 2022 to 2025 with all the resale use and occupancy certificates issued for the year. In 2017, we also updated the resale use and occupancy ordinance to ensure the safety of our residents, business owners, and visitors. That graph was based on the residential and commercial sales as well as residential and commercial rentals. We have all types of resale certificates. I believe there's three in total, which is a clear certification as well as a temporary resale certificate. These two allow new property owners to occupy the property and also call C O. The temporary access certificate allows the property owner to access repair, to repair properties, but no certificate of occupancy issued during this time, as well as non-inspection until the property is ready to be inspected.
So while Vicki has permits to issue, you have inspections to do.
And licenses and certifications to issue as well.
So for our, let's see, 179 short-term rentals, how many inspections does that generate?
If we have 179 for rental licenses. So for this year in 2024, I expected almost estimated 479 short-term rental inspections.
Some of them you have to go back more than one.
Correct. A lot of the times, they do have to get re-inspected and for short-term rental licenses, it has to be in a matter of, I would say, probably no more than 30 days to cure the items that need to be corrected at this time.
And you do resale, right?
And I do resale inspections as well. The resale inspections is for the safety of our residents. Again, a lot of the times, these properties do need to get re-inspected. They do have a year to correct the items for the resale. If it's a resale rental inspection, they have at least 60 days to correct the items because it is being rented by someone.
Well, thank you, permit lady and inspection lady.
And that's all.
Thank you. We're very busy.
All right, that brings us to planning.
Planning Commission needs, well, once a month, Thursday of every month at 5:30, the duties of the Planning Commission is to review land development and subdivision plans in order to make those recommendations to the board of supervisors. Currently, the table plans that are on the Planning Commission's agenda are Personal Care Home and Marshall Square Shopping Center. We also have a new, which is, it came about last year, the Plans and Projects page on our website. So you can see that if there is any plans or projects that are going to the, about Planning Commission that will be going to the supervisors, you can click on those links, and you would be able to see the plans in any public notice.
And this is something we borrowed from our neighboring township in Smithfield. So whenever they have a conditionally used or something, you can click on that and see everything that's going on. Thanks, Michelle. Still you. Wow, you were busy in 2022.
2024, the adopted resolutions, there were 37 resolutions last year. And in 2024, we had three ordinances. We've got a few ordinances slated for spring of this year. 2025, we've had seven resolutions, eleven were two months in.
And Christopher is also kept busy with me. Vicki is our right-to-know officer.
Hi, Chris Ray. I'm the vice officer for the township. On the left, you'll see a rundown of the 201 requests that we received in 2024 and breakdown of how they were responded to and what the topic was. And year-to-date, we've received 34 requests.
Thanks, Chris. I was impressed with his turnaround. He only had six 30-day extensions. Okay, and then emergency preparedness. Is there a safety person going to do this, or is... Okay, so our emergency management coordinator could not be with us tonight, but she put this together for us so that we could recognize our volunteer fire companies and our EMS companies so you could see the total calls that were going on in 2024. So one of the ordinances we did do was a fine for false alarms. Because, you know, they're volunteers. So to get suited up and go out and, what does it cost, $600 to every time a truck goes out? So if your smoke alarm goes off because you're a bad cook, and it keeps going off, and the fire company is notified because that's the kind of alarm you have, and they get there, that just costs them $600, not to mention the volunteer that had to leave a family dinner and go do that. So one of the ways that you can, you know, we appreciate our residents and all they've contributed to the fire and EMS tax to help these organizations keep going, but one of the ways you could maximize that is to just be careful. And who would like to tackle explaining what has been done with the tax dollars? Like Marshals Creek Fire Company purchased this pumper, and this and this verbiage came from them to explain how that helps uh everyone. Let's see, trying to, who would like to tackle that? You, Mike? You, Mark?
Uh I mean, generally, Marshals Creek, um they are buying, building and buying a pumper truck, actually a three-yard truck. With the tax dollars that they get from Middle Smithfield Township, that goes directly to uh the manufacturer for uh building this truck. So what we require from all of our providers, fire EMSs, uh documentation show where they spent the tax dollars. Um so one of the things from Marshals Creek, it's pretty simple because we give them a check and they get the same amount to the manufacturer, so there's one receive and, you know, everything's done. Um as far as Shawnee, similarly, uh we give them tax dollars, obviously not as much um as Marshals Creek. But again, they are, they too are building the truck. I mean, I I think that generally all of the fire departments, any EMS, Debbie can correct me if I'm wrong, Red. Uh I think that it's been a long time um waiting to make some improvements. And now with the tax dollars from Smithfield Township and Middle Smithfield Township, uh a lot of things that perhaps were neglected or put off, uh they can finally do. Uh and and that's for the betterment of our community. So again, you have all three fire departments are in the midst of building the truck. I think Marshals Creek doesn't expect to see theirs till twenty twenty-seven. Um and maybe these trucks, some of them could be up to four years from the time you do order to the time you get it on the driveway, so.
So I see all the specs here that they have uh provided with us, uh to us, so that we could see what they've uh purchased. And what I was looking to to try and do is put it in uh layman's terms of how this benefits the residents. And from what I can see, they all have um a larger capacity trunk, a larger capacity to for water storage and for fuel. Would that be, do you know what the difference is between what they have now and? How this, I mean.
Sure, you know, that's part of it.
And how old is their equipment now? It's pretty old.
Yeah, some of their, some, I mean, don't eat it. I think theirs is over thirty years old.
So you could see how uh this benefits the community. Tax dollars well spent. Okay. As it so happens.
And uh two of our fire companies are celebrating a forty-year anniversary. Shawnee just celebrated in February and Marshals Creek uh in March of this year, fourteen, six.
Yeah, eighty years.
Yeah, I wasn't there. And then we also have our EMS providers, Bushkill, Leaven pipes, suburban and Marshals Creek Fire. Marshals Creek Fire is more of a transport um organization as opposed to actually EMS, but I I think they're basically supported if necessary, correct? Yes?
Yeah.
Basic, yeah, okay. But Debbie's got some new trucks coming in too.
Two new trucks and they're almost there. We could retire our nineteen ninety-two truck that we bought from the army.
Where's Danny at? Danny, there's a historical vehicle.
You need in the ladder to find into it.
Can I use that one for inspection?
You know, if you visit, if you visit a guy named Ryan, he actually bought it. It's sitting in his yard. I think his kids like it.
And now we're uh to you, Mike.
Uh Public Works, twenty twenty-five, uh we do have a number of projects that we got planned. Probably the most significant would be uh the one, we're on a fall road. Uh as you head into Lehman, we're gonna cut that bank back and widen that road. I don't know if you know from the ambulance building to the stop sign, um where it's pretty hairy over there and it's pretty tight. Uh so we're gonna open that up, pave that. We have uh our cleanup ramp, uh will be up and running this year. Uh starting with our township water cleanup in April. We'll open up the ramp uh on Saturdays.
All right, that's on the slide.
It's on the slide?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll tell you about that later.
I thought it was the next one, but it's.
I'm good, brother.
Okay, sorry.
So, yeah, we have a number of roads that we intend uh to pave and or chip seal. Again, our our mission has always come to try to get between six and a half and seven miles of road completed per year. So we stay on a ten-year cycle of getting all of our roads done. Uh recycle compost, we have Oak Grove Facility, uh which continues to be open Monday through Saturday, seven to two, uh spring through fall. It's a very busy facility, um and and like I said, just get a permit if you want. Danny's down there, just about daily, so if you, you know anything. And then we have our curbside, heat collecting, and starting April for the spring and October for the fall. What is this here? Recycling? Oh, that's the cleanup. All right. Yeah, so like I was saying before, we're gonna have our our standard cleanup, our township cleanup, um on April eleventh and twelfth. Uh but now that we've developed that ramp outback where residents can come in after a leisure, pay, pull up the rent, get rid of their garbage, and leave. Uh that'll be open on on Saturdays. Um so it'll be open year, basically year-round. It'll shut down in winter, but uh hopefully it'll be more um beneficial for our residents, so you know, you don't have to put garbage outside of your house for twice a year cleanup. Uh and we don't find couches outside of the road or recliners or tires, et cetera. So hopefully that that will save us and save uh our residents. So that's here of the municipal building. Up in Wooddale, we'll still have the two cleanups. Uh we're hoping to receive a grant up in Wooddale that we spoke about earlier, uh that we can expand um that facility, which will also include a place to pick up uh compost, mulch, et cetera, like we do uh down at Oak Grove, so more to comment. That's it.
Just used a great purchase in the last couple of weeks to beautify the neighborhood. Tractor with the.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we we got a uh recall, but so yeah, with the boom mower that we can cut actually this, with road edges, uh just drive down the road and clear that brush uh that approaches onto the roads.
Instead of renting it.
Yeah, renting it was like eight thousand dollars um for two weeks.
Why rent it to you?
Right, so we were able to get very, very nice mower and and tractor for thirty thousand dollars. So it only makes sense uh to actually own it, so. Your soul movements, and again, we're hoping that we have the uh tight town that we have, uh employees picking up two online, we were just leaving, I mean, you could do it on a Saturday and the garbage is there Sunday, we all know. Uh but we're trying our best to to keep the main thoroughfare as clean as possible. So we had plantings this year, we'll do that again this year. Uh we'll get a big tree down by a tree shopper there. No offense, but it's a little statue. We'll get a big tree.
Okay, let's go on to like. Going south.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm James Redfield. I'm economic development manager here in Middle Smithfield Township. Uh Economic Development Committee meets once a month on the third Monday at five thirty with you at township. Uh twenty twenty-five uh goals are continuing to raise awareness of programs that the township holds for our businesses, what's available to them, as well as to raise awareness of our businesses to our greater communities. Uh we do our annual business directory to help amplify their advertising efforts. We do canvassing. Um and we also do our shop local program, which continues to grow, as you can see, year to year. Um we continue to fill the vacancy here in the township. And uh this year, a big goal of ours that we are working towards, and it is really the local economic revitalization tax assisted program uh that the township initiated in twenty fifteen. Next slide, please. So as you can see, we welcomed a lot of businesses in twenty twenty-four, two of them.
And mine was here, she was here too.
I know, mine was here, she left, but as you can see, she is present in spirit. Uh Pocono Palace, uh the former Pocono Palace, that is, Daraj Investments and the Pocono Club are just two of those. Um and there will be great improvements. I know the Pocono Club is currently working on renovating the Whispering Pines. They're Whispering Pines building, not ours anymore. Um and they will be opening the golf course and operating it as um as regular, as well as looking forward to development in the future. Next slide, please. As you can see, we've already welcomed two new businesses here to the township, and we have many coming soon. I'm gonna um touch base on this a little bit further in the slides, but um if you can if you notice, Yummy Kebab is one that's going to the Liberty Plaza. Uh they completed a revitalized two oh nine program. They had a vacancy there at the Plaza, and once they completed that program, this tenant became became theirs. Uh and as you can see, we are waiting for the car cleaners detail shop, for those who are not familiar. Uh Mobile Gas and Gary's Car Wash, which is right down here, they were also another revitalized two oh nine uh grant project. Um that shop had seen a vacancy for a few years, and once they completed that project, they now have a new tenant. Um and we expect Pocono Ridge Inn uh to open this spring and more developments for Mountain Eagle, please, too. So more on the way. Next slide, please. We will have our community map. Thanks to the E D C, we were able to raise four thousand dollars for our businesses as a sponsorship. Um and this map will go to every new resident, as well as uh go into a, be mailed directly to every resident here at township. Next slide, please. And I mentioned Lerta, a big one. So uh just since twenty fifteen, there's been uh four properties uh adding nine million dollars back uh in increased property value to township. That's three hundred sixty-six thousand annually in tax revenue fully realized. Um just as a refresher, uh Lerta is a program that helps phase in your property improved, uh or the action on your property improvements. So not the base value of your property, but the value of the improvements at a rate of twenty percent each year phase in. Year one is zero, year two is twenty percent, and year three is forty percent, so on and so forth. Uh but what that does is by offsetting those costs to those business owners and developers, they are able to invest in their employees, their programs, and their product. Uh and it helps our developers uh find the the uh the tax attractive so that they can bring their visitor. So as you can see, two hundred eighty-nine goes to the school district and um and Ed mentioned it earlier, the golf course, and we were working with them um to uh working with all of our prospects. One of the last uh bids that we received was from the new owners, the Pocono Club. Uh the last detail that helped cross them over the finish line and submit a bid was that of Lerta. Uh because they do plan to develop, and we're excited to see what those plans will be. Next slide, please. And I mentioned um renewal. What does that entail? Well, the the township uh program does not expire, but what was expected to expire this year was the school districts and the county, and I'm looking at Debbie, because as of Monday, we are two for three now. We got the the uh approval from the Strasburg Area School District Board of Education to extend it for another ten years. So we're very excited about that. Now on to the county. Sharon and uh and Chris, they had a, uh I'm sorry, and uh Richard, Chris, they had a leave to draw up their ordinance tonight. That's why they aren't here. They're very excited and looking forward to moving on.
Yeah.
Next slide, please.
We're on their agenda for March thirteenth.
Thank you, thank you. March, soon, soon enough. Uh and we do have a revitalized two oh nine committee. That committee meets on the fourth Tuesday of the month. And they view property improvement projects that are submitted for our grant program, our revitalized two oh nine grant pro uh program, which has improvements with building designs, landscaping, hardscaping, cleaning of exteriors, et cetera. Next slide, please.
Whoops.
And you can see we had eleven uh applications for the board supervisors that were recommended by the committee last year, and of those eleven, next slide, please. Ten were approved. So we have a few in progress. Um obviously, the winter kind of uh halts some of that, but we expect this spring to see these recommence. Next slide, please. Here are just a sample of four of the uh properties that have completed their project um uh before the winter. Excellent. And today we have over a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars worth of property improvements permanently approved by the board of supervisors, and we are now accepting applications for twenty twenty-five.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Yeah, thank you for handling all of those applications. All right, so now uh on to historical. You, the biggest news there is America two fifty. Um we always include our mission statements, and the goal this year, historical, is always focused on trying to push forward a township marker program on historical properties. Uh Danny uh is always giving us new information for our historical archives. Uh upcoming events, we have a memory makers luncheon every year. This year it'll be on August ninth, and here you can see the upcoming historical exhibits. Uh June, we always celebrate the anniversary of the explosion, um and we'll be uh adding a few touches to that uh marker and that space. In August, uh we will be putting something up for America two fifty, as well as the flood of fifty-five. And in October, it's always uh mastered online. So for memory makers, the this year's big topic is America P A. So um it is the hope that all of our communities will work together um in a collaborative effort, uh each contributing their own thing uh to America two fifty, but we won't labor that point right now. So we're excited to join with Monroe County. And speaking of America two fifty, Monroe County officially passed America two fifty resolutions in all of its municipalities. So go Monroe. Um and that brings us to you, Chris, with the prettiest slides ever for Parks and Recreation and Literate Beautification.
I can skip that one.
Okay.
All right, uh so we have uh our usual goals for uh the Parks and Recreation Department in twenty twenty-five. Uh we have all of our uh public events that are coming up. Um we also plan to complete uh improvements to the Ross Falls Trail, uh which we received a grant for uh uh last year from One for Nature to put up some new signage uh in the parking lot and trail lanes along the trail. Um we are also looking into some other park improvements, including some uh potential for new playgrounds at Echo Lake Park. Uh and as I just mentioned, our four main uh public events are Extravaganza, Community Day, Truck and Tree Management, Refining. Uh we also are always looking to increase our community involvement, including uh in event attendance um and event sponsorship, just to get uh the community involved in events and our Parks Department uh more every year. Uh we're looking for grant funding as always for for all of our projects. Uh some of the things that we're looking for grant funding for right now are uh improvements at Wooddale. Um Mike mentioned earlier, they're looking to do some road department improvements at our existing facility, but we purchased the property next door, uh which we hope to turn into a new recreation area. Uh we're also, as I already mentioned, looking for some new uh playground improvements for Echo Lake Park. Uh also uh are getting new trash cans for the Dog Park, Judy Boot Tech Park, Rescue Park, and the Community Gardens. We received a five thousand dollar grant um just so we could go from One for Nature uh to fund that project. Uh these are the dates for our upcoming Parks and Recreation events. The first one for the year is always our Extravaganza, which will be on April fifth. And uh Betty just told me that she's gonna be at Community Day before she left.
Remember that.
Oh, and yeah, well, we'll get to that in a second, actually.
Just mugging it?
Sure. And then so for our litter and beautification efforts, we have our twice annual thousand feet of streets. So we have our volunteer program to go out and pick up litter, which will be on April 26th and September 20th this year. We also have our adoptive road program, a very active adoptive road program. Most of our major, all of our major roads that the township owns are currently adopted. Most of the township roads that aren't adopted are very short residential roads.
Good job, Chris.
And thank you to our 2024 sponsors. These are a list of our 2024 sponsors for parks and also for our non-parks events. So for things like memory makers and Person of the Year. And we are currently looking for 2025 sponsors. We've received sponsorships already from several businesses and organizations, including Pocono Kids Zone, ESS A Band, Crosser Labs, and Bushkill Wilderness Core.
Thank you, Chris. Yeah, thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. And also too, I should have mentioned this while we were on the Community and Cultural Center, the Boy Scout project. So sorry about that. No, no. Well, if you'd like to, but so the Boy Scouts are building flag retirement boxes. One will go here and one will go at the Community and Cultural Center so people could retire flags. And then there is the perpetual flag for the Person of the Year. So if you'd like to.
Yeah, we also, the Eagle Scout candidate is also doing some voting boards for the Person of the Year. They're gonna, it's like a memorial voting board. So from the beginning of the presentation of the Person of the Year all the way to now. And you're gonna be getting two boards from the Eagle Scout and two retirement flag containers, I would say. And it'll be red, white, and blue. And the top will have blue and it'll be with stars on the top. And his name will be on it. And there'll be the responsibility of, of the scouts to paint flags and retirement properly at the pond road, which is the Veterans Forum War. And we have a dispense of retirement in June, which is Flag Day. And everybody's welcome there. The scouts will perform a ceremony on retirement. And we do change the ceremony every year to specific things like what does the flag allegiance talk about? Why we pull the flags the way we do and so forth and so on. So it's ever changing.
And you're, you intend to have that at the community center?
No.
For Flag Day or, or the, the boxes?
We do, we do also Memorial Day, Memorial Day, and we also do Veterans Day. We replace the flags in several cemetery, seminaries along Mills Smithfield Township and so on. But it's, flags are donated and the scouts will make their time to replace the flag.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And thank you everyone for your patience and thank you for your presentations, everyone. Yes.
We're gonna have the eggs fried again, so we can cough the eggs so much. Yeah, cough a little more.
I just read somewhere that two eggs a week helps, helps stave off dementia. And I'm thinking, great, just in a so. Well, thank you very much, everyone, for your presentations. You should be very proud of yourselves. Is there any questions on anything that anyone has for the staff, either on Zoom or in the audience? Okay. Guess.
Nice job, staff.
Yeah, nice job. Thank you. And now we can move on to the treasurer's report.
Wait, motion for our Gero account, $136,450.98.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye. Motion for our CEO cap, $69,362.82.
I'll say it. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye. Motion from our lead field account, $28,546.26.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And a motion from our EMS account, $24,472.31.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So listeners' report.
All right. As to the Raj Mission Resort Complex, the, the board has 45 days from the date of last hearing on the conditional use application to make its decision. And that would have fallen before your next meeting, but in order to straighten some things out, the applicant did grant an extension to the township until March 20th to render a decision on his conditional use application. So we are good there. And then on the Blue Ridge Right Away Agreement for 11 Onsite Drive, there's just been some communication back and forth between my office and Blue Ridge. But at this point, we're simply kind of waiting on responses from them. There was possibly some revisions needing to be made to the easement or to the agreement. But other than those two items, I have nothing to report.
Okay, terrific. There's no engineer, so no engineer's report. And that brings us to old business, request to rezone parcels classified in the R3 zone to C1 zoning district. Now, we had talked about this before we came in. There's really no action right at this point. Okay, next piece of old business is the Monroe appointment from someone from the township to be the representative with two others, the rest of the supervisors being the alternates for the Monroe County Association of Township Officials. It was an organization that was in existence years ago, and I was the representative for that. And it fell to the wayside for a while and has been reconstructed. So I respectfully asked the board to appoint me as the representative to the Monroe County Association of Township Officials, with the other two supervisors being the alternate.
I mean, I'll second it for discussion.
Any comments or questions?
Well, well, the one thing is Mark said he didn't want to be involved at all.
That's correct.
So I don't know why.
I don't want to be an alternate.
Huh?
I don't really want to be an alternate.
Right. So, so we can modify that. And also just to clarify, you know, I mean, I understand the organization and I think it'll benefit the township, but again, I think we should have seen the bylaws before they were approved by the organization. And also the officers are already installed.
Yeah.
So your first vice president are ready. So regardless of an appointment, you're first vice president of the organization. So just to clarify those two points.
All right. Well, there's been a motion, a second discussion, all in favor?
Well, I would say no, the way the motion has been written, I would say no.
Well, what would you like the motion to be?
Well, we have to remove. Mark doesn't want to be.
Okay. All right. So then it would be, I respectfully ask the board to appoint for the appointment as the representative to the Monroe County Association of Township Officials with Mike Wyre as the alternate.
Sure.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 And now we're up to request to release the Winds West Conditional Use in Land Development Remainer. So Mark, I believe that's yours?
$165 and nine cents is that request.
Sure.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
A motion to approve the final payment for the Green Light Go Signal Project, which will leave a balance of $10,000.
And that is $62,000?
We have a letter from, I'll read it to second person. I mean, I'll make the motion.
A second? Any comments or questions?
Yeah, I would note that we have a letter from the engineer of record, TNM Associates. They recommend payment condition upon receipt of change order number three from the contractor approval change order number three by the township or supervisor receiving documentation determined for additional support years being paid or with this recommendation, final contract document, limited contract release, the state will surely come through. So, I mean, we, we fund Smithfield Township. I mean, our portion is $34,965.95. And it's up to the engineer to get all the final documentation and agreements by the final release.
There's been a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public comment. Anyone? I don't think there's no. No one left on Zoom. Mrs. Clark, right? Ms. Clark?
We'll be going with that diner across from Dudley Gardens.
Oh, wow. James has some information for you.
What the township, the township can only do so much. We have a business owner who is in the property. He has just put it on the market. Business owner isn't aware. We have a huge R revitalized 209 grant to develop buildings that are no longer able to sustain being open. So they are aware of the parameters of what the grant would be able to do for that property. They are making new prospects aware of that as well. But for what, for a short answer, it is on the market for them to sell. Indeed, the amounts, it's under 700,000 that they are selling the property for.
And kudos to zoning because they've been following up with the owner regarding the violations on the property maintenance code.
Yeah, because it is a high sword. And if we're fixing 209, we need to.
Would.
Yeah. They are quite a little.
Yeah. So and there's, there's two things that the township has at its disposal. One is the property maintenance code, which zoning should enforce it. And the other is the revitalized 209 grant, the township property underneath. Who aren't we even doing?
I don't want to disappoint her, so that's why. Yeah.
Any other comments or questions from anyone?
I'll make a motion through, Jared.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Jared, there's only, I mean, five other ones for you to see how we.
People's here again.